But I think people's accounts, we need to discuss that piece moving forward. And then, so we have something, so when these other two houses in the end of the block starts, the rest of Silver Fox is at what we're going to do.
Do we need to pass a motion to allow you to change out those poles?
I don't think so. I think we have to do.
No, it's all right. Yeah, we're just following that.
Following policy, you have to keep pace with the difference.
I would, I just want to go back one thing on that policy camp that you talked about though. Because, and Ronnie even admitted, when we first talked about the streetlights, because this was one of the things in the development process, we did this and about the streetlights. We explicitly talked about the metal poles, like was put over on Will Springs Way and et cetera. And Ronnie did say something about policy, but that was as far, he never said policies dictate you have to pay for them, policy dictates we put a pole.
Didn't you ask him?
No, I never asked him.
Okay.
Okay, alright, that's fine. Let's drop, we're done with this subject. Let's talk about the second subject that's up there. Okay, this is contractual stuff here. Behind Stephanie's house, pile of rubble and rocks and a whole bunch of stuff that the city was removed, that was part of the contractual agreement. And the city was to remove that stuff and get rid of it and get it gone from there. And then, for the most part, Clay and I met up there, and for the most part, everything was done. There was a layer of sod in there, and then there was a berm back against the ditch. We discussed the fact that the berm, we knew would have building rock in it, but that was put there to keep that creek area when it overflowed from coming back up into the flat land area. So it was elected to leave that part alone. Now, when they put the drainage tube in, coming off from Silver Fox Lane, they noticed that the ground in that area, once they started cutting the diversion ditch and stuff in, was full of rubble and debris and et cetera. Now, when the lintens are trying to slope the ground in their backyard, to get it so that they can drain away from their house, they've hit all of this debris that was never removed. There was probably two to three feet of building debris that's in their backyard that was never removed from the premises. And then, there's also an area that has buried, we don't know what it is, it's maybe old tar cans, some probably stained down, you know, who knows what that is. But it's a small area, it's not very big, probably about the size of this room right here. It needs to probably be dug out two, three feet or need to be dug out, so that material can be hauled away.
Mike, that really isn't our job. You sold the block to the jury.
Bob, the contract, the contract. Yeah, the contract said you guys would remove all of the debris.
Does that mean we gotta go up there and dig holes every 15 feet on all of your property to find out if there's any more anywhere else in the property?
I'm talking about, I'm talking about in that area there, it was known that this debris was buried there. And they never dug down, they got down to a certain point, they stopped and then covered it up in dirt. That's what I'm saying took place. They never finished the job. No, I'm not asking you to go there. I am going to ask you to go up there and clean up all the other piles you've left over.
Yeah, I'm buying that.
But the understanding I had, and I think Blaine come to the council and said, well, the rock crusher's done, he, they stopped him, they wanted to use the rest of that line that cracked. So when they stopped the guy, that stopped our part right there.
Okay, Bob, just saying, excuse, just that, I want to ask a question. The other day, when we walked through there, the question was, you said, I thought we've done up here. And then you said, obviously, we're not.
Okay, Mike. Katie, where are we at with this contractual? What's our obligation yet that we?
Well, there was this pile or whatever it is, was definitely discussed, and that's why it was included in the contract that it needed to be removed. My understanding, it was something different than rock.
Well, this is still concrete. This is still concrete building rock, this is buried.
Okay. So that's still our responsibility.
This is separate from the rock crusher guy and everything we went through with it. This is, it's part of our contract, it was discussed.
So we need to get it done.
Yeah, and it's not all over, it's this one place.
It's just that one area, it's just that one area behind my house.
I don't think that, in my opinion, we need to get it done. You know, if we contract and we agree to, we've got to get it done. Probably sooner than later, because I know they're trying to blame this.
I mean, you guys have, you guys have new soil up there in your front yard.
We brought the soil ourselves, we brought that in, and we stopped in the front yard in the back. What happened was, as, it was, I mean, it's just a variety of material from huge limestone, from limestone buildings, to steps, to bricks, to ceramic tiles, to plates, to hubcaps, that obviously have been left there and covered up over the years. I mean, you can tell some of it dates back probably to the 50s. So as we get back there, it's there, and we can't do anything with it. It's not natural, it's huge, and you're welcome to go back there and look. And you can see it from the north side.
Thank you. When could we finish up our obligation up there?
Yeah, I don't know, we, like I said, we're doing two other projects up there right now when North Campus out. Clay, do you got a timetable we could pursue here on that?
Guy's gonna be, will be this winter, I'm sure. I'm not saying we can't start.
Is there any way you could stop what you're doing and get up there and get it over with, clean it up, and get out of there?
Well, I don't know the depth of the problem. Like Mike was saying.
You looked at it.
When we talked and walked back there, looked the situation over, we both knew there was stuff there, and it was there for 50 to 100 years, we don't know. And we decided to stop with that. Mike said to me, he said, well, it's not going to affect where the house is being built. And I said, no. So we looked that over and agreed. And he said, well, let's stop there. We'll just cover the rest of it up. So that's the reason we left. We thought we had fulfilled what we had with mine. And as it turned out, someone took a ripper in there and started ripping that, and of course, they unearthed what we knew probably was there. We were told that it was going to be covered up with dirt and landscaping and all of this, so.
It was going to be covered up.
Well.
We didn't know how far back they was going to go.
How deep is it?
Oh, we decided, when I talked to Travis, we take two feet, two to three feet out.
Are you wanting to plant grasses?
Yeah.
They'll haul dirt back in.
Yeah, what needs to happen is that.
They will. They'll haul the dirt.
They'll haul the dirt back in. They just need the rock and stuff out.
The slope, we have to slope down for the grave of our house. And so, I think, we, even though we don't want to haul in all the dirt, and Travis is probably going to kill me for saying this, but I think that would be our compromise if you would be willing, the city would be willing to come in and take out that non-natural, the two to three feet. That would get, not all of it, because it's just crazy how much is there, but that would get some of it.
How big area is it?
It's our backyard.
It's probably, what, 100 feet? 100 feet, probably 30, 40 feet wide, straight down through there.
Do the back of?
You do it, payload, probably.
So it says here in your letter that you were to be replacing partially with dirt once that's removed.
Well, I'm not sure she did say she'd let, she removed it.
I'm wanting to know what we're being stuck with here.
It's up to step, if you remove the rock and stuff, they're willing to haul the dirt back in, that's fine with me. I'm just going back, going back because we need to get that rock and stuff out.
Would the city be able to provide us the dirt? Like, would there be a place where we could go get the dirt and we would be willing to bring it in?
I don't know, I give the city 3,000 yards of dirt, you can have some of that back.
It's going to think maybe with their airport project, we got, Mike, I'm not sure how much dirt they're going to produce out there. Does that have a business project?
This fall?
Yeah, but they may not know when it will wake up.
Yeah.
Well, actually, that'd be spring.
We would, we would begin that process, like Travis is doing our front yard now,
so we would begin the backyard as soon as it's removed. Yeah, so probably this fall, because we will be moved in December.
You're just going to get everything leveled out?
We'll probably get it leveled out and plant grass this spring. Yeah.
Is there any way we can get up there yet this fall?
I will have lots to talk about.
Talk about, see what you can do.
We've got a lot in here right now, so I.
Sounds like we need to uphold our contract, and I don't, I don't think we should put it off on the spring. In good faith, I think it needs to be done this fall.
What about piles? Talking to Mr. Dick or Jake Eagle for it?
Mike, he's pretty busy.
He just, he smoked out two Basmas the last three days for us, and then he's gone. So I don't know if I didn't.
Pat could get it done really quick if we want to pay that fee, but if we have the equipment.
Yeah, he's pretty busy.
Glenn, why don't you see what you and Clay worked out, and let's get it done as soon as we can. And we understand the, you know, the things that we put on his department with the parking lots and sidewalks, but at the same time, we need to get this taken care of.
Right. And the other piles that were left that Mike talked about, just from the street construction.
You can just drive around up there, you'll see big piles of weeds out in the middle of everything that's been mowed. And every one of them piles have got building debris, I mean, the street debris or sewage debris, I don't know what kind of debris it is. We cleaned up a bunch of the pipes and stuff there the other day, got them out of there so we can try to load some more of the weeds, but the concrete and the rubble and all that stuff, that's just left over for development.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you for bringing these stories to attention tonight, and we'll try to get those addressed. Just on the agenda this evening.
Yep.
Glenn, did you have any questions?
No, that's fine.
We're ready for the street. Is the unfit structure, hearing for the unfit structure located at 709 West Quarter. Did you get my text on that? Chris, you want to bring something to do on this, please?
Yeah, this structure was occupied a year ago, and served notice under the environmental code to obligate the property owners to fix it up. Trees fallen into the roof a couple places and collapsed, and a lot of water damage, and the roof was, all the shingles were really pretty much gone, and it was just a real mess. Property owner was not able to get a contractor, as I understand, he was not able to get a contractor to do that for him, because he just didn't have the resources to pay. And so, it went through the court process, and finally got to a place where the city wasn't going to get anything done, and we weren't going to get any funds, more funds out of the property owners. So it was a city attorney's suggestion that we go this route with it, unfit structure. And it's not hard to show that it is dangerous and unfit for human habitation. The occupants have moved out, and have vacated that property, have been gone for probably three months now or more. And so, in the process of this unfit structures process, as you recall, a few, a couple months ago, we designated tonight as the night for public hearing. I don't see anybody here to represent the property owners, or any of the neighbors to contest this. My suggestion is, because we've already been through a process, a court process with the property owner, that we allow only 30 days now to give them a chance, one last chance to do something with the property.
Matt, you got a question?
My question is, how much, if, assuming we pass this, how much of a financial burden is that going to put on the city of Lloyd?
I don't know, I'm guessing about $5,000, could be six.
And that's for just demolition costs?
Yes.
And do we have any way of getting reimbursed, like through the?
They, the, we do, theoretically. When, after the city's done, we've paid off the contractor to do this, we'll send the bill to the property owner. Give the property owner 30 days to pay that bill. When they don't, or if they don't pay that in that time, then that, those, that cost will be assessed to their property taxes. If they don't pay their property taxes for, I think, three years or more, then it would go to a sheriff's, as I understand.
Correct. And, and once it goes that far, the likelihood of you recovering is not good, because nobody's going to buy a lot for, you know.
Yeah.
Is there any way that house would qualify for the demolition project?
Well, we're already past that.
You mean if there was a new?
Yes, if we applied again, yes.
I would think, unless, do we even own that?
No.
No, unless you bought it in a tax.
Okay, so yeah, as long as the city doesn't.
Yeah, just to fill in the council, we had a couple different properties in town that we prefer to try to go through the court system first, to kind of force their hand to tear it, to tear it down. It worked on one, but not on this one. I can only go so far, I feel like I can only go so far in municipal court to force someone to demo a property. You know, if they don't, we can give them a court order to do it, if they don't follow a court order, then we fine them. They don't, they of course don't have any money to pay those fines, and, or we put them in jail for contempt. And I don't feel comfortable doing that to demo a property. So this method ensures that the property is demoed, but of course, costs, costs some money. So, and some folks, it works. This particular property owner, you know, we, he was in court every month, he came to court every month, and it was just clear that we were not going to make any progress with him trying to demo it, find a contractor and demo it himself. So, it does work. I have another property owner that did go find a contractor and is in the process of demoing it through the court. But this one, it clearly just wasn't working.
Anything else, Chris?
Nothing.
Okay, we'll close our public hearing. Next item on the agenda this evening is the, the January 1st City Council Meeting of Corporations in Iowa.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda in its entirety.
It's been moved by Councilman Oddie that we approve the consent agenda in its entirety. Do I have to second by Councilman Latrell? Any discussion? No discussion, Manny, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Brown?
Yep.
Gignor?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Oddie?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yep.
Latrell?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda this evening is the Resolution 2015-22 Unfit Structure Located at 709 West Quarter. Any further discussion on this? No questions, I have a handful.
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Brown that we adopt Resolution 2015-22 Unfit Structure Located at 709 West Quarter, seconded by Councilman Oddie. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion, Manny, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Richard?
Yes.
Gignor?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Latrell?
Yes.
Brown?
Yep.
Oddie?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda this evening, under formal action, is the electric pole bid from Chris Davis in the amount of $10,591.
I still move that we accept this bid, because we talked about it earlier.
It's been moved by Councilman Brown that we approve the pole bid from Chris Davis in the amount of $10,591. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Second by Councilman Gignor. Put your hand up, you got it, buddy. Any further discussion?
How many poles is this buying, it's Ronnie?
I think it's 1735 or 1745. The 45 is going to go out on Highway 14 North, if, once we get started there.
Oh, thank you.
Any other question? No further questions, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Go ahead and carry it. Next item on the agenda this evening is the insulation jack replacement quote from Grace in the amount of $11,815. And this is to be covered by our insurance from the health and insurance last fall.
I still move.
It's been moved by Councilman Peterson that we accept the bid from Grace for the insulation jack replacement in the amount of $11,815. It was seconded by Councilman Miller. Any further discussion? No further discussion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion's carried. Next item on the agenda this evening is the EPA emission testing bid from Burns McDonald Company in the amount of $13,200. Now, any question for staff? Why is there, the other had $8,800? Ronnie, you want to address this, please?
Yes, I will. Burns McDonald did it five years ago for us, and these same people bid then, and five years ago, and here this year, they kept asking us, calling us, wanting to know what kind of test EPA wanted, okay? We figured if they, we knew what they were doing, they would know what kind of test EPA wanted. And for no price difference, I'd be much rather pay that, instead of having somebody come in here and have that fail and have EPA come in here. Because I didn't want to deal with them.
No price difference? Looks like over $4,000 to be different.
Yeah, it's around $4,000. But it's the same thing you did five years ago. You might not have been on the council, but somebody could. But that's the same thing that we did five years ago. We stayed the same company we passed.
So you're being concerned is the quality of the work, and that we might fail and have to retest?
Right, and that's what Henry's problem was, and that's what we managed to do. We thought it'd be cheap and long-term, so we ended up with a month. I've never doubted EPA, I'm not sure I want to come to the role of story lord. Bunch of nice guys. Are they? They like you, then?
I don't know. I don't.
It's been moved by Councilman Gignor that we accept the bid from Burns and McDonald Company for the amount of $13,200 for the EPA emission testing bid. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilman Oddie. Is there any further questions? No further questions, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion's carried. Next item on the agenda is the KMEA sale dinner. Glenn, you want to address this?
You know, this is more complicated than ever should be, but it's the electric power up here. Just kind of as a reminder, KMEA is a joint action municipal organization that we belong to, we buy, we're part of, which is an energy management project, too, been in existence for about seven or eight years now. That's a power pool, basically, that's where we, as cities out here, the north central part of Kansas, have pooled our resources, so to speak. To make a long story short, we all bring our resources to that pool, and they optimize it for us. One of the cities in that pool that's recently joined is this need, they don't have a lot of generation, and they're asking for cities to come up with some excess power for them. What we're proposing under this is we would sell one megawatts of our power that we get through GRDA and authority out of Oklahoma to KMEA to the power pool, and they would resell that, basically, to me, at that price that you see listed there. And they want one megawatt most of the year, but during the summer, people want two megawatts and we'd sell it at that 35, actually, maybe about hour. If we were doing that this year, we would, we would have profited about $8,000 or $9,000 a month. And the difference is what we would buy for on the day ahead market, which is what they call it now, versus the 35 millimeters, which is a set price under the contract. So it's a difference between what you could buy for on the open market, or what we'd sell for actually. Can't guarantee that'll be what happens next year.
Yeah, but they won't reimburse us, it's just.
Yeah, we're just buying and selling. We're selling this one or two megawatts to KMEA, they will sell it to me, and then we'll buy.
And then they'll reduce $9,000 or whatever on our.
Right, yeah, right, it'd be reduction on our savings.
This is.
Goes through KMEA, but basically is between the city of Lloyd and the.
Right.
Okay, I have a question, if it's our GRDA that we're going to be selling them, what are we paying GRDA for our power from that per million?
Uh, yeah, I don't know, I have, well, it really, it's, you know, it fluctuates, so it's kind of like a month.
I thought it was a fixed price.
And I can't tell you off the.
GRDA power, despite what it's price.
Right, yeah, it's a full month, I can't, I can't do off dump, man, actually. It's lower than the first box. So, I mean, that's a difference.
Wouldn't it receive very much?
No. So, I mean, it's a pretty minimal amount, but they're a small city.
Is there a timeline on getting this done?
Well, they want as soon as possible. I mean, because it would be, it would, you know, next.
I mean, can we wait until the next meeting, so we can paper this, and you find out the information that we're wanting?
As far as what, what are the actual prices?
Cost, what's the actual?
Yeah, I can do that. Is there any other question about? I don't know.
What are they going to?
We're trying to sell what we're purchasing. Right. I mean, what we are generating, the weight, what we are purchasing. Yeah, we're not, yeah, it's not what we generate here. Yeah, so we were buying, and we have a, we have a contractual, like I said, with Western Power Administration, which is.
How proud of them, you know, down here in Oklahoma.
And what we're buying, have we got a guaranteed number that we have to? Yes. To purchase? Yes. Right. It's a long-term contract. But, I mean, we have to purchase so much, whether we use it or not, is that? That's correct, yeah. Is that a? Correct, right. So that you have the flexibility to sell. Which we've asked them to do. If you remember twice, we've been approached about selling their capacity, which is the energy stability to produce power, basically, in a nutshell. And we did that for Garden City, and we signed a resolution for them. They didn't follow through, because they were involved in a lawsuit with their former supplier at that point. So even though we actually signed that agreement with them, they actually never followed through on that. So they never bought that capacity. We offered it to them, went through the steps, but they, they were in the middle of that, well, I think they ended up being two lawsuits with their former supplier, until it became part of our power pool. And they didn't want to get us involved in that lawsuit. So they never, they never followed through on that. They may come back to us at some point, want to do that again. I don't know, so far, they haven't. But we look for these opportunities every once in a while to buy and sell within the power pool or that.
So if they're, like you said, if they're short of generation, do they not have the capacity then to produce, or have the capacity for their own to load?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think they do, in me, I've never.
And how do they get away with that in pool?
Me, it's about the size of Smith Center. I mean, it's a real small city.
Not getting different size, the size of it.
Uh, how do they get through that? I mean, as far as.
How do they even get into the group if they don't have the capacity, purchased capacity to meet?
I think they do that, it's more expensive than that, so they're looking for a way to play side.
The contract.
Oh, yeah, yeah, very much so. I mean, there's, you know, there's, there's a risk to us, we're just selling something excess.
So what are they going to do at the end of this one year if they still don't have any generation, I think, of that capacity?
They'll probably come back and ask for somebody else.
If they do it again.
But they don't want to commit to one year, I mean, the ice is back, because, you know, they're just, they're not waiting for longer than that.
Are we below, what were a lot of that, can I, or purchase? Have we been below that?
Oh, yeah. Are you comfortable, Ronnie, in saying that this is an excess amount here that we're trying to sell or get rid of?
Well, we have a huge deal in the past. I talked to Henry about the one with Garden City that we kind of do, and at that particular time, we had funding, but I guess I wasn't really comfortable doing it for our city. And I don't have any good reason not to go accomplish it. To me, it just wasn't right, or the collaboration type stuff. I won't say it here, but our suppliers, one of the things they offered to us didn't make sense to me. And maybe I look at things in a redneck way, but if it don't make sense to me, it's not worth it.
This one, they, they ask us every, every month, how much we want to take from GRDA, and we always take the minimum, because it's, it's more than, it's higher price than what because it's, it's more than, it's higher price than what you can buy in the market, work and generate yourself. So you don't wanna ever take the wall bit because what's working in our favor right now, and works in everybody's favor, is that natural gas prices have been way down. And Kansas has a certain amount of wind power, so does Oklahoma and Texas all around us. And the prices have just been low. I mean, it's not as low as historic, but it's getting, it's getting pretty much down there, so. You know, so we pass on the majority of the money here that we could take. It's sitting there waiting for us. So we would sell just a little piece of that, that's the energy, that's the energy. It's a future discussion, I know.
You don't, no, you don't pass on, but to your customer, does?
Uh, we, we do, well, we do, the, the power cost adjustment down, that's usually your, by the cost of, you know, fuel or something like that. So you will actually see that reduction because of your natural gas account. But you won't see a huge reduction. Because it's based on.
I do that.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so it's not like you have to just get off and discount or something like that. Rates or something, you'd have to rate, you'd have to adjust your rates pretty often to that. But anyway, so that, you know, they just really wanted one or two megawatts, and we figured we could.